I'll call the meeting to order. This is a meeting, today is February 11th, 2021. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. Today's Thursday, February 11th, 2021. We're in the Alene Strain Community Room of the Doss Student Center, 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to act, consider and act on the posted agenda. First item on the agenda is call to order invocation and pledge allegiance. I'll ask Mr. Baker to lead us in the invocation.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Please bow with me. For we are very thankful to be here today. We're thankful you've kept us safe. We pray that you will keep our students and faculty and staff continually safe through this next weekend, next few days, not only with the virus but also with the weather. Thank you for this brand-new semester and new opportunities for our students and the bright future of this college. And thank you for our board members. Please be with them as they deliberate. In your name we pray. Amen.
Stand and now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, remission of God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You see this? We do have a quorum. We got that right smack dab on the number here. There are four of us here today. And just for the record, I'll say it's Mr. Carney, Ms. Morris, our...
Our elderly ones.
Our wonderful Sue Cody, Max Smith's here. And we'll move to the second agenda item, public comment for individuals not on the agenda. Do we have anyone, Ms. Worth?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. How are you today?
Good.
Good. Number three, we'll move to the President's Report under Agenda Item Number Three, recognitions, employee notices, and spring enrollment update. Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations: Weatherford College recognized 35 of the finest teachers from across the region at the 25th Annual Jack Harvey Academy of Exemplary Teachers Celebration on Friday, February 5th, at the Doss Heritage and Culture Center in Weatherford. We are extremely proud to honor the great work that our K-12 teachers are doing across the region. Weatherford College alumnus Neil Noakes, a 20-year veteran of the Fort Worth Police Department, was recently named Chief of Police for the city of Fort Worth. Congratulations, Chief Noakes. Congratulations to History Associate Professor Scott Williams on having his professional paper proposal accepted for presentation at the highly selective American Historical Associate Conference. We are very proud of the advances in scholarship that are being made at W.C. Students from area high schools converged on the Weatherford College campus Friday, February 5th, for the 19th Annual Coyote Area Math Competition to compete in pre-calculus and calculus competitions. Next year, the event will be renamed in honor of the late W.C. Mathematics Professor, Pat Cook. Mr. Cook remains both highly respected and deeply loved. Weatherford College baseball players Brendan Dixon and Kayden Hawkins have been named Players of the Week by the Northern Texas Junior College Athletic Conference. Dixon hit three home runs, two doubles, seven RBIs, four walks, and scored seven runs. Hawkins, a left-handed freshman from Midlothian, did not allow an earned run and gave up just four hits with three strikeouts and two walks. Congratulations Brendan and Kayden. And finally, I am very pleased to announce that Weatherford College has been awarded an additional $5.9 million in federal grant funding to recoup COVID-19-related expenses and to support student aid. Employee notices: DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Suzie Brooks, an administrative assistant, has announced her retirement effective 5/14/21. Cheryl Livinggood, a nursing instructor and program director, has announced her retirement effective 5/31/21. Jacalina Mendoza, a food services worker, has resigned effective 12/16/20. Nancy Mullinax, police records specialist, has announced her retirement effective 3/31/21. Janice Odom, the secretary in fine arts, has announced her retirement effective 5/31/21. And Cheryl Rodriguez, the LMS administrator, has announced her resignation effective 5/7/21. We thank these team members for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Moving to number four on the agenda, Consent Agenda and Financial Reports. We have the posted items there. Is there a motion to approve those items?
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt, we do need to pull from the Consent Agenda Item 4A for a correction with attendance at the last board meeting, correcting the status of Dr. Robert Marlet.
All right. So we will pull that and not consider that. Is there a motion to approve B, C, D, E, F?
I shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. Moving to number five, Consideration Possible Action Order Authorizing the Issuance of Parker County Junior College District Consolidated Fund Revenue Bonds Series 2021. Dr. Cantrell, and I will tell you, that is one of the more in-depth reports that I've gone through in my life. That really was.
It really is.
It really is.
It's pretty complicated.
Yes, it is. Thank you for doing this, Dr. Cantrell. How are you doing?
Oh, I'm good. I'm very good, thank you.
Good.
Matt Bowles with RBC Capital Markets and Hassan Maak with McCall Park Hilton Hurst send their regrets to you all. They planned until 11 o'clock this morning to be here. Actually, Matt's on the phone with me right now, in case there's any questions I can't answer, and probably right away I'll be talking to him.
Thank you.
I just want to start off. Matt was just going to give a brief overview, talking about the project and bringing us up to date where we are right now. As we all know, this project was to build a new workforce and technology building, 70,000 square feet. We have a letter of intent from the North Central Texas Council of Governments who intends to lease approximately 10,500 square feet of this. The college has begun work on this building. They're not working this week, I don't think. They announced yesterday at the construction meeting that they could not work in this type of weather. Financing for the WETB is planned as a 30-year tax-exempt consolidated fund revenue bond Series 21, 2021. And the following pages, I think I sent out just a little while ago to you all, summarize the preliminary results. We've been very busy this last month, working on statements and working with the bond rating, S&amp;P people, and also with the underwriting insurance company. So it's been a... But it's been very worthwhile. We've got some very good results from those rating agency. We plan to sell the revenue bonds next week, generating $29.5 million for the construction fund. It assumes a 30-year level debt service structure with a standard 10-year par call. Assuming the bond will be sold with enhanced ratings of AA through bond insurance and with the college's underlying revenue rating of A+. Assumes the use of assurity policy to meet debt service reserve requirements. Assumes delivery date of March 11th with the first interest payment due August 1st of 2021 and the first principal payment on August 1st, 2022. Assumes use of capitalized interest through August 1st of 2021. So once again, we will have our first payment in August. Assumes tax-exempt interest rates for AA insured credit as of December 8th, 2020 with plus 25 basis points. Assumes reasonable estimate for cost of insurance underwriter spread. I'm going to point out to you, as Matt said, really there's several interest rates that are required to be figured, but the one that is the most important and most telling, I think, is the TIC. And that is the... It considers all cost used in the bond purchase or the bond sale. So today, we're estimating 2.893, which is much less than it was, I think we were considering about a 3.50. So the cost of the interest is, will be approximately 2.893 this time. I will tell you what's about to happen for the rest of the month. On the 18th next week, and I will tell you that Hassan is going to come out and deliver all of these documents next week and get signatures and explain all of this. There will be a... Today is the required board meeting for ordering the authorizing the issuance of the bonds. On the 18th, we will negotiate the sale bond marketed to investors. And then on the 18th, the pricing certificate will be executed by authorized district representatives. Then on the 19th, they'll distribute the draft of the final official statement. The 23rd, submit documents to Attorney General for approval. The 25th, they will receive comments, finalize, and distribute FOS. And then on March 18th, there will be the closing, and the funds from the bond will be delivered. So we will... And at that time, reimbursement will be made to the college for all costs authorized, since I believe it was last May that y'all authorized... You passed the order that would authorize us to pay ourselves back for the funds that we've spent so far on the building. Also on the call today, as I told you, is Hassan Maak. He has prepared all the documents for us for what we're about to do today, is pass the order. He prepared, he would have spoken today, but I will go over his notes here. This action is basically the consideration possible action on the order authorizing the issuance of the Parker County Junior College District Consolidated Fund Revenue Bond Series 2021. This document will authorize the appointing of a pricing officer and delegate to the pricing officer the authority to approve on behalf of the issue of the sale and delivery of the bonds, establishing certain parameters for the approval of such matters by the pricing officer, and approving the form of a paying agent registrar agreement and other relating matters. And after it... That's what Hassan will come out next week and work with Dr. Farmer and myself, and Dan I'm sure will be there also. The order presented to the board authorizes the issuance of Series 2021. The Series 2021 Consolidated Fund will be on a parity with an outstanding consolidated fund revenue bond. The Series 2021 Consolidated Fund Revenue will be secured by certain tuition and fee revenue of the Weatherford College, and also will be secured by a debt service reserve fund for the benefit of the owners of the Series 2021 Consolidated Fund Revenue, which will be purchased with bond proceeds from a surety guaranteed municipal corporation. Additionally, Weatherford College will purchase a municipal bond insurance policy with bond proceeds, which will guarantee the principal of an interest on the Series 2021 Consolidated Fund Revenue Bond as described in the order and exhibits attached. The order delegates certain approvals to the President and Executive Vice President of Financial Administrative Affairs to effectuate the sale of the Series 2021 Consolidated Fund Revenue Bond. The adoption of the order will authorize the pricing officers to execute on behalf of the college a bond purchase contract, paying agent registrar, and a pricing certificate that incorporates certain pricing parameters of the Series 2021 Consolidated Fund Revenue Bond as approved by the board in the order. Recommendation, and I'll let you turn that over to you, Matt.
Thank you, Dr. Cantrell. I have a point of order, I guess. The recommendation is really calls for two actions, to approve and then to appoint. Do we need to make two different motions on that, or just one motion?
I think that can be together.
Okay.
Is that correct, Matt?
So is there a motion? I'll read what the motion would be about, that the Board of Trustees approve the order authorizing the issuance of the Parker County Junior College District Consolidated Fund Revenue Bonds Series 2021, and appoint the President of and the Executive Vice President for Financial and Administrative Affairs of Weatherford College each as pricing officers to effectuate the sale of the Series 2021 Consolidated Fund Revenue Bonds. I'll make that motion, since I just read it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that's all four attending members, so that's approved.
That's approved, Matt. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Anything else, Dr. Cantrell?
No.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll move to number six, Consideration Possible Action Tasby Policy Update 40. Rolinda Strum. How are you today, ma'am?
Good. How are you?
Very good. Appreciate you being here.
Yes, sir. As you all know, the college partners with Tasby Policy Service to update both our legal and local policies. Legal policies reflect mandates from the state or federal law, and board action is not required for update to those legal policies. Tasby also recommends updates to our local policies to ensure that these are consistent with recent legislative changes and legal changes. And board action is required on the local policy updates. And Tasby Policy Update Number 40 is being brought to you today for approval.
Okay, I'll read this one, too. The motion would be that the Board of Trustees add, revise, and/or delete local policies as indicated above, which would be in Tab 6, and the local policy comparison packet and all the items that are applicable in Agenda Item Number 6. Add/Delete local policies as indicated and as recommended by Cabinet and by the TASB Policy Service Update Number 40. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimously approved. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Moving to number seven, that would be reports. Dr. Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Included in your board book, you will find the Guided Path Written Demand Study Update, as well as the Equities and Athletic Report, which is produced annually, and the proposed 2021-2022 Tuition and Fee Schedule. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions or address any comments that you might have on that, and if necessary, we have the appropriate administrator standing by in the overflow area in the cafeteria, should there be any questions that require their assistance.
Thank you.
Good to meet you.
Moving to number eight, future agenda items or meetings. Dr. Farmer?
Yes, next month, you have been provided the proposed 2021-22 tuition and fees. Next month, we will be bringing those back to you for consideration and possible adoption.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Moving to Agenda Item Number Nine, announcements. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. You see the report there in your packet. Although the February 11th, 12th, and 13th baseball games listed there have since been postponed because of weather, they will try to reschedule those games, home basketball games, again on February the 13th, and for the rest of the month.
Thank you. Anybody comment or question any about that? All right. Moving to closed session, we will... At this time, we will end our open session, and we will adjourn, and we will, in two minutes, we will go into our closed session to take up... To consult with the college attorney in accordance with Government Code 551.071. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
May I ask a question?
Okay, I'm going to call the public session back to order. It's now 3:23 on my watch. So we're back in open session and we'll move to agenda item number 4A. And I failed to approach that the right way. What we need to do is consider a motion approving the revised minutes of January 14, 2021. And I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved as revised. With that, we'll go to agenda item number 11, which is where we take up after we have come into session, open session, which is consideration possible action real property. There are no items or actions to be dealt with in that item. So we'll move to item 12, consideration possible action appointment employment evaluation, reassignment duties, dismissal of a public officer employee. We have, again, nothing to consider or any action to take there. We'll move to agenda item 13, consideration possible action completed board of trustees self-assessment. And just so that there's a public understanding of what's done. Every year, the board has begun and has continued to do a board of trustees self-assessment evaluation. And what we do in that regard is we fill out a series of questions and statements to help us evaluate the effectiveness of the board. And we want to cover as many possible areas that are involved in the board's governance function so that we can try to upgrade and do as good a job as we possibly can as we... I've got my hearing aids on and so Siri just started answering my questions on that. I apologize for that.
I don't like Siri.
Get back to what I was saying. Anyway, the board assessment for this year involved 21 questions or areas and we had written responses in five areas. And we compile all of the answers to all of those different questions and areas. And we look as evaluators whether we agree, strongly disagree, disagree, neutral, agree, strongly agree. And that's how we rate the evaluations individually. And as we do it collectively and we tabulate those results. And so the motion I want to make again would be the motion to accept and approve the board self-assessment evaluations that are completed and are part of our process every year. Is there a motion to do that, to approve and adopt, accept these assessments?
I shall move.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. That will be the order. All right. With that, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is adjournment. Is there a motion and second to adjourn?
Well, that's not here. I'll have to do it.
All right. You know that in all the sense we don't have any takers. I'll second it and all in favor say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.